Call meeting in order, we'll ask everybody to stand. Ask Ms. Nancy if you will to lead us into the page.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the name of our republic, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment. Thank you, you may be seated.
Amen.
Up first is the approval of the agenda, do we have a motion? Motion been made, we have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is recognition, do we have any recognition tonight? I do want to make mention of the volleyball team at Thomas Walker was the Cumberland District regular season interim champions. The volleyball all district players, Lakenburg may play other year in the Cumberland District. First team was Lakenburg, Patricia Biggie, Kelly Jackson and Michaela Carr. Second team, Autumn Collinsworth, Honorable mentions. Volleyball was Corley Jones and Rayland Cuthbert. And cross-country boys was the Cumberland District runner-up at Thomas Walker. The hall district was Whalen Ball and Eli Day. Just want to congratulate those athletes at T W.
Congratulations to... Yes, congratulations. Watched them online and I went and watched the good old team in person and they've done a very fine job. But a good team that play together and I really support the pioneers and all they're doing.
Any other recognition tonight? If not, we'll move to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, you got two, the one on the ESER and then general public comment.
We'll do general first, I think you're general, right? You're not talking about the COVID money, okay. I do want to make mention State of the Name and, you know, the spill.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Dean, Phil Hensley, District 3. I appeared before the board a couple of months ago requesting consideration for an after-school remediation program. I want to compliment the board, Mr. Dean and his staff. Remediation program started today, they did a great job. I have four great grandchildren at Dryden that in the last year it really hurt them in reading skills. And I hate to ask for more. The program is Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:15 to 4:30 after school. Two days a week makes it hard for parents to schedule. And then, at least in the case of our grandkids, they need all the help they can get. If there's any way to consider having that program four or five days a week from 3:00 to 5:00, I don't know if, I think all the kids are behind, but two days a week is, you're meeting the minimum requirements of the state. There's a lot of federal money available for this. But it would be nice if you could consider a four or five-day-a-week program. And again, thank you for starting the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment? If not, we'll move to the ESER money, public comment. There's two here. Mr. Dean? Dude, you got, you said two people?
No, I, I, we had two public comments.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood. So, anybody want to speak on behalf of how we should spend ESER money, pretty much? It's COVID, COVID funding coming from the feds. If not, we'll move along to board comment. Do we have any board comment? Oh, go ahead.
I just, after-school remediation program.
I got you marking out for both. And I don't oppose. Any board comment tonight?
I'll join in with the others, congratulate the athletes at Thomas Walker, we're success, team's success. Also want to recognize the Lehigh football team. And we went, what, two years without winning a game? And then Joy comes in and some kids have bought in, I believe. And so we're heading around for the playoffs tomorrow. It's going to probably be a pretty tough opening opponent. But it shows significant progress and I want to congratulate all of them and wish them luck tomorrow night.
I'd like to do the same, congratulate them. They've come a long way, there's a lot of spirit out there. I appreciate the fans, the parents, the players, the coaches. And I think we're rolling in the right direction. And I'm also very happy that T W is doing well. This county needs to be put on the map again for sports.
And I'd like to congratulate the generals as well. It's very exciting, we're finally moving forward. I'm thankful for our new coaches and the, the fans, the community are pulling together and supporting the team. And it's just like old times and I'm just real excited for our kids at Lehigh Scott.
I agree with all of you, we're living in the right direction. I think everybody's taking part in it.
Any other comment tonight? Obviously, we had a big election, I'll say a little bit, we had a big election for the governor's race this past election. I just want to say that I'm happy to see the outcome of the way it went. I'm not going to sit here and talk politics, but I think with all the things we're faced with and a lot of the radical movements that's been coming at us in the school system, I'm glad to see things looking towards other directions. Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion for consent agenda?
I'll say a motion.
Motion been made, we have a second.
Okay.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is, I've got reports of the board.
Please look at the school board association's legislative positions for the board to look at. They sent that to us, so we just put that under reports of the board. And Mr. Chairman, I did talk to them as well as, besides ESER money, I think we also need to ask, and I'm backing up, any public comments on the return-to-school plan? Which is just how we come back to school safely during COVID. If there's anybody here on that.
Anybody want to speak to how we should return to school? Plan, return-to-school plan. I remember these going out and everybody was confused, wondering what he was talking about and what that meant, but it's...
It's simply not updated ever so often. We are back in school, we haven't missed a day this year, but we have to update that plan ever so often.
If not, we'll move on to reports of the division superintendent, Mr. Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to say it's Veterans Day and appreciate all the veterans. Without them, we wouldn't be here having this meeting tonight, so want to make sure that we recognize our veterans. Couple of things I didn't put on the agenda, this is career development month. We've got a great CTE program just down the hallway here, want to recognize that. It's also this week, we're finishing up National School Psychology Week. Michelle Gambel is our school psychologist, just want to recognize her. In your packet, you've got the Kingsport Times News drawing cards. I think this month, we recognized Dryden and Flatwoods for theirs. Please check those out on the Kingsport Times News write-on. This month, it's Jonesville and Pennington, so if you get a chance, check those out. Enrollment, we're down a little bit this month, 2798. Last month, we were at 2812, so we've lost 14 kids in the month. It fluctuates, as you all know, all year long, but the budget was based on 2865, so kind of keeping an eye on that. You've got a copy of your operations update in your packet. I think we've had a lot of work going on with the bowlers. I'm happy to say this week, I think we've had a little shift. I think we have the bowlers up and running, they're fine tuning them. I've had, I think, more heat in the buildings than I've had in a while. I think some of the floors got really warm today, which is not a bad thing because we went from not having any heat to, we've got plenty right now, so. Transportation update, that's in your packet. Mr. Dave, I think he's working on some bus routes, getting that software finalized updating, so we might be looking at some bus routes. I told him if there's any way we can look at that and if we need to make any change, do that at the end of the semester. So he's working on that. COVID-19 update, just want to let you know, our numbers are looking a whole lot better. I've sent out two notices this week for two students positive cases. That's a whole lot better than we've had throughout this school year. Currently, we're averaging, our seven-day average is five a day. So, that's a whole lot better. This week, I think the highest we've had is 11 in the county, countywide, in one day. During the, during the peak of it, we had 82 one day in the county, so we've came down a whole lot. At one time during the peak, we were averaging 30 a day across the county, so we're doing a whole lot better. I've talked to the principals and asked them if they could utilize cafeteria more, get back more toward a normal school day to do as much as they can safely, so I just want to give you an update on that. ESER update, we had, you know, public comment tonight. So we will look at the comment we've got about the tutoring program. Appreciate Ms. Willis and Ms. Belcher working on that, we have to update that every so often. I've got, I can show you all a spreadsheet on the COVID money we've got since the pandemic started and how we've spent it, if you want that. But I just want to kind of give you an update. We haven't touched our ESER 3 money, that was the last pot of money we got. We have spent approximately half of our ESER 2 money. Doing it off the top of my head, it was about 5.2 million and we've spent right at 2.6 million for different roofing projects, boiler projects, bus aids, all kinds of cleaning supplies. So, and then we've got some items on the action item, dealing with that.
I have a question. So that, the ESER money and the remediation you was talking about, is that at every school?
We offered it at every school. And I'm going to ask Ms. Willis, have we started at every school yet?
I'm not sure that every school has started.
But we have offered that. The tutoring program tends to do better at the elementary school than it does at the middle and high school. It's kind of hard to get a high school student to stay longer than...
But we're offered at all elementary?
Yes.
How many has taken part, do you think?
The last list I saw, I think, was Dryden, and I want to say that was 40-plus kids signed up, K through 4.
Do you think it would be a good idea to do it more?
Do...
Do you think it would be a good idea to do it more than two days a week?
I think it's something we need to look at. And that is an option. We're doing it after school, some places have offered before school, but most of our kids get there right at time for school to start, so mornings usually don't work real well, but four days a week, I would say, is more feasible than five. I think most people, and kids included, at the end of the day on Friday, are ready to go home. So I'd say we could look at doing it up to four days a week, but five days, I think, is a little pushing and you probably won't have much turnout.
So, when are we stopping the bus aids?
We stopped afternoon at the end of October. We are planning on stopping altogether at the end of this semester, if our... If our, yeah, morning, if, if the numbers stay the way they are. I mean, the bus aids have been wonderful, I appreciate everything they've done, the bus drivers, everybody, but that's what our plan was and is, so we'll kind of keep an eye on the numbers. I mean, if you look at kind of a bell-shaped curve of what we have right now, and we're on the downside of it, I can't predict the future, but that's what we're looking at.
One more before you sit down, back to COVID, we can talk about it, for COVID-19 updates, I think the government federal mandate on vaccinations.
We received...
While we were there, and I know we're a part of it, we have more than 100 employees.
The Department of Labor and Industry and the White House sent out some language saying that if you had more than 100 employees, you fell under that, or if you followed OSHA, which Virginia does follow OSHA, you would have to either be vaccinated or test weekly. I think there may be some exemptions. But, and Mr. Sturdle, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the 5th district has it held right now until they decide, so we're all just kind of in a standstill.
That's correct.
So, we're going to have to look at it depending on the, the result of the court action, but right now, we're just kind of waiting. We do not have a vaccine mandate currently. And like you said, we've had an election and I think some of the people who have won those elections says they're going to change some things, so we're kind of playing it by ear and wait, wait and see. But we do not currently have a vaccine mandate. I will say that with the help of Jenny Hall, our lead nurse, we've got opportunities for any employee who wants to receive the booster coming up. Any employee who wants to, if they want to start the vaccine, coming up. They've approved the vaccine for five to 11-year-olds, we have sent that out. We will have that at all five of the elementary schools for any child and parent who wants to do that. We're just offering it, I mean, we're not mandating it, we're just providing a service for the community.
I just wanted to clear things up, there's a lot of confusion about all that right now, a whole lot.
And I'm not going to say that sometimes we're not confused because it's almost like daily you get something different. Like Mr. Sturdle said, you know, it's kind of held in court right now, but we still get some guidance that we should go ahead and start planning as if one side or the other wins, and it's just kind of hard to steer a boat when you don't know exactly which direction you're supposed to be going in. So, our staff does a great job and we stay on top of that, but we're kind of in the wait and see right now. And I think that's everything I've got.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Moving on to unfinished bids, do we have any unfinished bids tonight? If not, we'll move to action and discussion item, action if any to award contract related to request for proposal. 21-1008 track restoration at Lehigh School to Baseline Sports Construction.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we solicited bids for restoring the track at Lehigh. We received two bids, one from I think ATC and Baseline to, excuse me, restore the track at Lehigh to a condition that we can host a track event, which we've not been able to do for a number of years. It would also provide a place where students could go to have a physical activity outside, which is part of COVID is getting people outdoors when you can. This would, the track could also serve for Lehigh or Thomas Walker to hold a track event, since Thomas Walker does not have a track. It would also benefit, I think, the middle schools who could host a middle school track event. So we've got the low bid in your packet, like it's $406,700 to Baseline to restore Lehigh's track to...
Where's this money coming from?
It's ESER money.
It's been approved by them, correct?
We contacted Lynn Sodat and she told us that, you know, we put the language in there that she advised us on. We always usually, right before we give a green light, we ask to make sure we didn't miss anything. We sent that email up, we've not heard from them, of course, they're all off today because of Veterans Day. But we feel confident, and I say we, Ms. Willis, Ms. Belcher and I, that it is legitimate use and it has been approved. We'll get another confirmation from them before we award it with your all's blessing. But I think we're good on it. I know other counties, I know one who did a astroturf at a football field. So, I think we're good, I think we've jumped through the hoops that they needed us to jump through and we will get one more confirmation before we, you know, notify Baseline that we're good to go.
Is this a complete restoration, Mr. Dean?
Well, it's...
I mean, it includes a new fence, from what I understand.
It includes the new fence completely around it, dividing the football field from the track, that, that fence. It tears up what's remaining of the coating and goes down to the asphalt. There is one area that is, has sink over the years. It'll have to be built back up to get it to the level. There's a little drainage issue, it includes all of that and includes that resurfacing is not back to the red track because there was a premium for the red track. It's back to a black track with the rubber coating. And I think that would be more if, you know, if Thomas Walker did come up, it's a black track, it's not like it's, you know, it's kind of a one-size-fits-all. Ms. Belcher may correct me if I'm wrong, I want to say if you went to a red track, it was like $30,000 more. So we didn't justify that. But it does go down to the original asphalt and fix it where it needs to be fixed. New fence separating the football field from the track because there were some places in it that I think they deemed unsafe with some of the fencing in case a track athlete were to fall and fix that.
I'm looking at $268,000 on this.
Is that the tennis court or is that the track?
New asphalt overlaying surface on six-lane track, 4,400 square yards. $268,000, and it includes prep work, new asphalt overlay, new rubber surface. And then you've got a lot of optional things on the back here. There's $100,000 of optional drainage work here.
And I think if you're going to fix the track, I think you need to do the the drainage work or you're going to get back to where you were because it's not draining properly, and I think that's what they said caused that one, I want to call it turn two, if you're on the track, the far corner down next to that house that is not level. That's where the drainage issue is.
It's very dangerous for the kids to be running down.
That's been a problem, you get it, right?
No.
No, it wasn't originally, it's that drainage issue and it's settled.
There became a period of time where it just wasn't maintained. There's certain things you do every so many years to maintain that surface, they just quit doing it. And that's why it's in the situation that it is.
And Mr. Williams, you can literally go over there right now and peel it up. And it cannot host a track event the way it is right now. It's not safe and nobody would come here to participate in a track event. And I wouldn't recommend it because it's just not safe. But as far as the optional items, I think, you know, the drainage and stuff that we've included in the total bid, I think you should do, if you're going to do it, do it right, or you're just throwing good money at bad, and I think...
We didn't have P E classes that used it for the mile running and the physical fitness tests and
Correct.
and things like that, so.
I mean, we were teaching, Nancy and I took them out every pretty day to make them walk it. And I was better than sitting on a tail.
Technically, the elementary schools could come and they have to do a mile for their physical fitness activity. I mean, it'd be a perfect place for them to come.
And they have used it before.
They have. I mean, Elkhorn does not have a place unless you run the mile in the gym, that's pretty much the only place they've got. I'm familiar with St. Charles, you went over to that old ball field and ran so many laps over there, but this would be a better place to actually do an actual mile. And you two are former physical fitness instructors and, you know, it's a little harder to do, I think Jonesville...
And it's accurate for the mile.
Right. Jonesville ran around the building to do the mile. I mean, back in the day, I think Mr. Heinz and I went to the Cumberland Bowl Park and ran a mile. So, it can be utilized with everybody. I mean, I don't think anybody would oppose if one of the elementary schools said, I need to come up there and run the mile. I don't think anybody would have an issue with that.
And plus, we've had the public in the past to come and use it to walk on. And I've had people come to me about how dangerous it is, if they have any problems or things like that.
And some of you may correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've hosted what's now Mountain 7 for Lehigh track events there, and I think we've had some Cumberland District, this Thomas Walker events there.
We have.
So, it can be utilized by everybody.
This is a good outfit, you feel this?
I think they're a very reputable group. I mean, it's a lot of money, I'm not, I'm not going to say it's not.
I think they put in all the track and tennis courts in our area and in Knoxville, they could do UTs, so the others are good companies.
But I mean, I'm not going to say it's not a lot of money, it, it is, I mean, it's... No, it's not.
I think tonight's the time to do it, it'll never get done.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion been made, we have a second, any more discussion? All papers say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is action item B, if you need to award contract related to request for proposal. 21-1009 repaired restoration tennis courts at Lehigh to Baseline Sports Construction.
This is a similar situation, a little more, my understanding, a little more intrusive. If you go to the tennis courts at Lehigh, I think there's large cracks that we have filled. They're not true, and when I say that, I mean, they're not a flat surface. They've said that they'll need to go in, take down the fence, go down to the ground, re-grade it and fix it, repave it, resurface it. It's going down to the dirt for the track, for the tennis courts to get it back to a, what I'm going to say is a suitable surface. We've tried repairing it, I mean, since I've been in this office, we've paid to have the cracks fixed. I mean, some of them are two inches wide. We've filled it full of different products, I guess is a good way of putting it. It'll last for a little while, then it starts to sink again. I honestly believe, in my professional opinion, that if a coach came here and protested, they could win for the simple fact that we don't have a suitable playing surface. It can also be used by other gym classes, like we've said, I mean, tennis is a sport that every person could play for a long time in life.
Scholarships.
You get scholarships, it's a sport that isn't sought after a lot, so you do have that opportunity. But I would encourage all of you, if you haven't had a chance, go over and look at them. Again, it's a lot of money, but this one goes all the way down to the dirt where the track went down to the asphalt.
Were you talking about, what, 30 years ago, it's putting in?
89, oh, well, no, tennis courts, it was just a little bit later, wasn't it?
A little bit, not much.
But I honestly believe, and you play tennis, I, I know, so I believe you could hit a tennis ball and you think it would be going one direction and it'll go the other way. Because it hits one of those cracks and... And I don't think I'm exaggerating.
No, there's no exaggeration, anybody wants to go up there in the daylight, you'll be like, I'm not getting out here chasing a ball, you need to face first in the pavement.
I think we've been fortunate that nobody has curled an ankle or broken an ankle from it. But it's also ESER money, you know, it's another place that somebody could go outside, have a physical activity outside. But currently, I wouldn't send a group to the tennis courts because I'd be afraid you'd get hurt. You know, you might be going to try to get away from COVID and you end up getting hurt for another reason, but...
In 13, when I retired, they were getting real bad then, because I always used to take places up in the spring. Because half of it was just to walk up the hill.
So, both companies that bid on the track, bid on the tennis courts. Again, Baseline had the lowest bid, but I also think they're probably one of the most reputable companies and so that's the recommendation of the administration.
So I'd like to make the motion to do this, but I'd like to add to fix Thomas Walker's too. I don't think it's as bad as Lehigh's, but it's, as far as looking at it, it needs some...
We're just about one hour.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to make another motion, actually, I just want to clean vote on this and then discuss it with Mr. Dean.
I already have.
Let him talk to those people.
I already have.
And that's what I've been doing the last six months, so.
So, do we have a motion on this action item?
I'll say a motion.
One been made with a second, all papers say aye?
Are we going to get it over to the Thomas Walker thing now?
For what?
For the Thomas Walker tennis court to resurface? Is that what, is that what you're saying, Mr. Kidwell?
Not tonight. I mean, I want to know what it requires, I don't know, I've not been down there to it yet.
I haven't either.
The will and papers of the board, we could definitely explore it. I couldn't give you a dollar amount tonight, Mr. Williams. I think Mr. Kidwell is correct, I don't think Thomas Walker would be a down to the ground, I think it would probably be a resurfacing. I don't think it has major damage likely at Lehigh, unless...
Oh, I would don't. It's only your pace of football, or right beside the football field, it's got cracks in it, there's grass growing through the cracks in the middle of it. It looks like this one, but it ain't uneven as this one is.
I'll go.
But, I mean, I like to look into that. Obviously, we're spending money. Here, we got drainage issue down there horribly bad around the football field going off the hill, and the biggest problem that I have there is ventilation and the lack of showers in the gymnasium locker rooms. There's zero ventilation in there. The ceilings have fallen in studio. There is zero showers there. There is zero water back there, and we've got some big issues there that I like to see fixed.
Does the P E, do anybody use that anywhere to shower?
They'd love to use it, but they're not usable.
And P E class or?
P E class or sports.
Because they're pretty.
I don't think, I don't think Lee High's are usable either.
Yeah, I checked that.
They are. I mean, but listen, last time I was in there, they weren't.
Not the always.
I can find it for sure. I mean.
Find out.
There's been zero ventilation back there either. Years ago, the vents got took down. There is zero ventilation.
But you do have air conditioning in the gym, right?
Yes.
We've never had that one yet.
No, I'm not getting in a match. Who's got a hoop? I'm just saying what needs to be done.
But, you know, it go hot.
Right.
After 21 hours.
Obviously, we've got some money. We're going to spend it on sports, so let's do it at both. That's all I'm asking of the board and the superintendent.
And I can definitely look into it, and then I, like I said, I'll say we're not spending it just on sports. We're spending it on places to have physical fitness activity.
Right. You're going to have practice at 6:00 AM in the morning, like we have. Being to be nice for a student to be able to clean up.
And I can tell you, we have started the process of looking at how hard it would be to get hot water at Thomas Walker in the shower room, and we're still exploring that because years ago, you got hot water from the boilers, and some of that stuff has been taken out over the years when it wasn't used and never fixed, and we'll have to look at how we could do it economically, I guess is a good way to put it. But we'll definitely look at it.
No, I don't want to bother, no.
No.
Next is D, action if you need to approve one time pandemic hazard premium paid to all current full-time employees.
We need to see.
Oh, no. Action if you need to issue a request for proposal for boiler replacements at Thomas Walker High School, in Flatwoods Elementary to convert coal powered boilers to propane boilers at Elydale Middle School and Rose Hill Elementary School.
We're asking for permission to bid those. I think it's one boiler at Thomas Walker, two boilers at Flatwoods. The boilers at Elydale and Rose Hill aren't in awful shape. What we were looking at doing is possibly converting those to propane. You take out the center of them, put a firebox in, make them propane. I think everybody will admit it's getting a little harder to get coal, and I think it's probably going to get harder to get coal. Propane's a little easier to get, a whole lot more efficient, and heats a lot faster. So, we're just asking for permission to look into those, see how much it would cost. I can't say we can do them all. It'll depend on the price, and like I said, the last time we looked at getting boilers, the ones at Pennington, they told us they were 26 weeks out, so.
I had somebody mention that with the infrastructure idea, that there might be some grant money there for that.
We can look at that. I haven't seen the language on it, and I don't know if anybody has actually read the language on it, because usually there's some of the congressional documents, there are thousands of pages that have stuff in there, but I will definitely look at it. We're just getting prices, so we're not spending money right now. Just want to get prices on it.
We did get all the grant money we can.
And we're trying. I mean, we're not trying to let any money slide by, so, I mean, some of it, you have a little bit of flexibility on how you spend it, and then some of it has to be for learning loss, so, but we're just asking for permission to bid those and see where we're at cost wise.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion been made with a second. I would like to add that if you probably look at, need to look at underground tanks at some of these schools, because you can't find a place for tanks. They have a requirement of 50 feet from the building, and I don't know how you're going to do that at one place.
Thomas Walker. There's not a lot of options, because usually we try to put them somewhere that are not easily seen. Thomas Walker's going to be a little bit of a challenge.
We'll have some shelter underground, don't mind.
The whole tank, like a jungle.
Yeah.
Even if you can get that thing, that thing's pretty rare and hard to find.
And we've got two small tanks here at the vocational school at Lee High, and we've had to put, you know, concrete barriers around them to kind of protect them, and.
Thousand gallon tanks that was there.
Yes, two thousand gallon tanks here and two thousand gallon tanks at Lee High.
And you can buy them underground, or that's a little bit more to it, but you're looking at $3,500 per tank, basically.
So, we.
And you can't see none of it.
You can't see any of its.
Right. It's got lid, like a meter lid, just sticks up about that.
Yeah.
That's what I would do, even if the ones over here already have tanks.
It'd look better.
Yeah.
Help Jones will tell you that.
Jones will be, I mean, you could probably go to a smaller tank. That thing is massive. I don't know what it is. You may know, it's a six, seven, five thousand.
Does it make it any safer to be in the ground?
They say it does because of, it keeps same temperature year round. It don't heat up.
Yeah, we've had a problem where we were trying to get these running. We, I mean, we've had a hard time getting everything, but some of the valves for the big tanks were not available, so we hooked it up to a smaller tank. It was sucking it out of the smaller tank so fast, everything was freezing up, and you probably wouldn't have that problem if it was in the ground, because like you said, it keeps the temperature the same. But we've had some interesting things here, trying to get these up and running.
If your boiling pot ain't big enough, you don't get enough vapor, then you freeze it.
So, I've learned a little bit about propane here last few days.
I don't want to run the maintenance, by all means, but I would look at underground tanks at some of these places.
We'll definitely explore it, because like you said, Thomas Walker would be hard to find a place to put one.
Action's been made, or a motion's been made with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is D, action if you need to approve a one time pandemic hazard premium paid to all current full-time employees who are employed during the 2020 and 21 school year. Employees who did not work the full-time 20 and 21 school year will receive a prorated payment.
We have looked at this and talked, and we, I have the green light, the email saying we were good to do this. This would be a one time payment to every employee in Lee County Public Schools that worked last year. That was the heart of the pandemic. If they didn't work all of last year, we would prorate that. Administration is recommending $1,200, and that's easy to do prorated, because if you were here half the year last year, you get 600, go by the month, and we also say that you still have to be working at Lee County Public Schools, because, and I don't know, it's just our opinion that if you left us, you know, we don't think we should pay you. But last year was the heart of the pandemic. That's what we base this on. So, we can get this processed with your all's blessing and have it to all of our employees before the holidays. I'm not saying we can get it done before the end of this month, but definitely before, you know, Christmas, but we could have it first of December, and I think our employees have went through a lot, and just one payment, same price for everybody, because everybody has done different things, and whether you're a teacher, custodian, cook, bus driver, nurse, here in this office, but we're recommending a one time payment of $1,200 to everyone who worked last year and are still currently here.
We're just making.
This is COVID money, ESSR money. We've got the green light to do it. I've talked to Ms. Baker. I talked to her today. She believes she can take care of her head start group. I told her if she couldn't, we would, because I don't want anybody left out, but she thinks she can with her money, and I think our employees would very appreciative.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say go.
Any more discussion?
Yeah. I think, I've been asking about this for months now. It's finally got approved. I want it to be more, just to be honest with you, but this is what's been approved by Richmond. But I've talked to Mr. Dean about it. I'm going to vote for this tonight, this amount of 1,200, but when we get to the end of this ESSR money, this COVID money, if we've got our boilers, and we've got our roofs, and we've got the other facility repairs that have needed to be made, if we have money left over, I'm going to ask Mr. Dean to try to find a way to give a second hazard pay to our employees. I just want to throw that out there. People might think it's not enough or whatever. We're going to try in the future to maybe, maybe pass some more on if we can, so.
And I know, it doesn't sound like a lot. I mean, it's $1,200, but when you look at us having between 500 and 600 employees, you know, you're talking half a million dollars plus. I mean, it's a large chunk of money, and, you know, I've had people come to me and said that this would really help them, especially this time of the year, as we approach the holidays, and I think it's something we can do for them.
Gary, so everything, pretty much that we've been voting on, and we're going to vote on for the next probably year or two, it's not in our regular budget. It's kind of COVID money.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what we're getting this money for this stuff, so. Did it come up with the beard, the 200,000? Are there, you say with the state?
Well.
They approved that.
They approved, and we have talked about it, and I've talked to some of you all, and we've talked about different dollar amounts. Like I said, we've got to have a certain amount that goes toward learning loss. I'll ultimately say, I said $1,200 because it'd be easy to figure out how much you'd pay somebody prorated, because it's 12 months in a year, and you know, but we tossed around the idea of a thousand. We tossed the idea of around 1,500 more, but, you know, state has approved the plan we have, and like Mr. Heinz said, I think if, you know, if they came and we had money and we could use it for that, and they would approve it again, we could look at it, but, I mean, I think it's a good gesture, and I think people would be appreciative.
No problem.
So.
It's all in.
We have a motion. Your motion done been made with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Dean, do you need a vote, or do we need to amend something to put down a proposal to add a tennis court or to give a proposal, or can you just ask this company what it would cost to resurface?
We could ask this company, or Ms. Belcher and I can do a request for proposals. I don't think it'll be anywhere close to the amount to doing Lee High, so I believe administratively we can take care of it.
And here's the other thing, I think I mentioned this to Ms. Belcher before, contact the United States Tennis Association. They'll give us 25,000 toward the Lee High tennis court, and they'll give us 25% toward Thomas Walker, up to 25,000, so.
Like a match, I think there was something?
Yeah.
So, we're definitely there with the one under any month.
Yeah.
So, we can definitely look at that. But we can take care administratively, looking into it and see how much it costs.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Well, that's Mr. Heinz, who is in the closed session.
I move we go into closed session to discuss personnel under the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 dash 3711 A1, student discipline under the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 dash 3711, section A2, a request to release a student from compulsory attendance pursuant to the Code of Virginia, 22.1 dash 254B1, and that's 22.1-254B1, pending and threatened litigation under the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 dash 3711A7.
Thank you. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now closed session.